Colleges, that'd be very, very difficult with a maximum grant of one and a half million dollars. And low and behold, the supplemental ed opportunity grant, S E O G, and also the federal work study grant, from which we get almost a million dollars a year, that would go away, would be eliminated, and then money would be put into the apprenticeship grants. So that's three topics that we had some discussions with Representatives Dingell and both Senators Gary Peters and Debbie Stamenow. And I was able to talk to both of them and tell them what the impact would have been on Henry Ford had this risk sharing taken place. So that's a little bit of an update on what took place in Washington. There were a number of other things we talked about, but those were the three key things. And then the last thing I have is regarding the Michigan Community College Association and the review of the governor's budget. There's basically, not basically, there is zero increase in the state appropriations calculation for community colleges for this coming year. He did recommend 2% for universities, but 0% for for community colleges, as well as property taxes. Our property tax growth with the personal property tax is really a crapshoot. So I bring such wonderful news, but that's, at least the cash flow looks good and the outward financial looks good, but what we're hearing out of Washington and out of Lansing is we have our work cut out. And we were there, we were like, say, we'll be talking to our folks in Lansing, and I just talked to John McDonald, and John said he's leaving for Washington tomorrow, so I'm going to give him this information as well. So he's well aware of what's going on with the Higher Education Act. So that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Special reports. First one is community liaison update. Board report number 4416.
Vice President Glass.
Thank you. Good evening. And we have a positive presentation today. So even though, and I'm not sure if I heard John Sackowski mention that, we are ranked number one on the Capital Outway in terms of our scoring.
True.
Yeah, so after...
That's the good news.
That is the good news. So now the appropriations need to follow. So tonight, we do have another positive report. And as you know, the diversity task force was formed to provide a framework and resources to accomplish the strategic goal, number three, of the college's strategic plan, which endeavors to cultivate a collaborative culture, to improve organizational effectiveness, diversity, and stakeholder satisfaction, and to enhance community relations. So one of the initiatives in support of the achievement of goal three was the creation and implementation of the HFC Arab American Community Liaison position. This position was created to serve as a neutral party to develop positive collaborative relationships in the Arab community. In the fall, Mr. Sam Bazey was selected as liaison, and he began the work of developing channels of communication between the college and major Arab American institutions in the college's service area. So in your packet, you have another copy of the job description, the press release, as well as a written report from Mr. Bazey. And he is here tonight to go through that report, to present to you all of the good work that he's accomplished in just one semester. So it's really encouraging. He has released time again this semester for this work. And then we would also like to encourage the board to support expansion of this type of program into other sectors of our community. Yeah, yeah, it's really important. So this was a pilot, and it's just done really well, and again, much to do with the work of Mr. Bazey. But, you know, we have a Hispanic population in southwest Detroit, as well as the African American community. We serve many students from Detroit, and so that's something that we'd like to pursue in the future.
I just want to let the rest of the board members know that it isn't in our packet. We did receive it online, so that if you're looking...
Oh, okay. Great, great.
We don't have it.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by thanking you for giving me the opportunity to address you on what I have accomplished thus far this semester. I don't want to forget to thank Dr. Cynthia Glass for her continuous guidance and support since I assumed this position. I am very confident to say that this new initiative by the college was well received, you know, in the community. I made it as my first test to go out and meet individuals representing key organizations in the Arab American community, in order to promote the mission of the college, of fostering diversity, to build personal relationships, start a dialogue regarding educational issues, projects, and listen to concerns from the community, as well as listen to proposed solutions that would benefit the college, the students, the community as a whole, so everybody would be a winner. As you are aware, as Dr. Glass mentioned, the college is currently making efforts, good efforts, to promote diverse and inclusion. And this position was seen by many as a right step in the right direction. I have had the opportunity to meet many individuals in the community representing organizations that share our goals and how to best serve our community. I'm going to provide you with a very, very brief summary of what I have done, and more details are available, you know, in the report that you should have a copy of. I had a meeting with Mr. Hassan Jaber, CEO of Access. Mrs. Jaber provided me with a summary of their integrated model and the many services and programs offered at Access that we think that our students can utilize, you know, some of the services and programs. He also discussed the possibility of creating a joint internship with the college similar to our current internship program that they currently have with the University of Michigan Dearborn. I'm going to follow up, you know, on this, you know, just in the near future. I had also a meeting with the Arab American National Museum staff, and I was amazed to find out about the many services, programs, workshops, arts, diversity programs that they offer, film festivals as well that they offer at the museum. We are working here at the college on creating an inclusion webpage, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to promote their events on our website, because I know that this is something that would interest of many of our college community members. I had meetings with imams in the Dearborn and Dearborn Heights community. The imams suggested some ideas on how the college can become a Muslim-friendly college. They welcome any opportunity to explain religion through sponsored events here at the college, through seminars alongside with scholars from different faiths. I also met with Pastor Rani Abdul-Masih from the mother of the Saver Lutheran Church. Pastor Abdul-Masih is well-known with his active engagement in bridging communities. He also will come any opportunity for him to participate in any efforts in order to promote diversity and inclusion. I also went to Zaman International. It's a nonprofit organization. I had a great meeting with Mrs. Najah Bazey, CEO. Zaman is a nonprofit organization. It keeps expanding to serve more and more people in need. They recently established a culinary kitchen, and we are here at the college exploring ways and how we can support them through our culinary arts department, probably creating internship opportunities for our students to go and do some volunteer work there. So we are in the process of working on that. I also met the executive director of leaders advancing and helping communities, Mr. Wasim Mahfouz, who introduced me to many programs that they offer, including scholarship program, youth leadership, and diversity education program. He even offered to tailor, you know, some of the programs that they have to our students if there is enough interest, you know, just here at our college. I also met with Mr. Siblani, publisher of the Arab American News. We discussed many topics, including what the college should do in order to have more American representation in the jobs at the administrator level and higher. Mr. Siblani also provided me with suggestions to help us in our outreach efforts. Muslim Student Association, I met with this group several times to address their concerns about not having a dedicated place for prayer during prayer time and the fact that we don't serve halal food in the Skylight Cafe. Having a halal menu in a room for prayer would be, would for sure promote our college as a welcome in place to all. But I'm very pleased to report that under the leadership, you know, of Dr. Cynthia Glass and her team, we are making progress, you know, on the room. I just got an email that it is possible that we have found a room, but it has to go through, you know, just official channels. So hopefully, we'll have a room. It's not going to be called, you know, a Muslim room. It will be a quiet room that could be used, you know, just by all students, you know, at the college. And for the food, I was told, you know, just that the cost is a factor of why we're not serving halal food, you know, in the Skylight Cafe. I'm working maybe on some halal wholesalers, see if they can beat the price that we get, and maybe this is something that we can take care of as well. I also met with Mrs. Fay Badun, executive director of the Arab American Chamber of Commerce, a great supporter of the college. She gave me some ideas on how to better market some of the great programs that she thought that we have, but we're not doing enough marketing to market them, you know, just to the Arab American community. Now about events that I was involved in. I assisted our international admission office in inviting an immigration lawyer from the community to address audience questions during a meeting aimed at increasing the number of international applicants to our college. The number of international students at our college has suffered a serious decline in the past year, so are making efforts, you know, to increase this number. Marketplace stories. Working with the Arab Culture Studies Program under the leadership of Dr. Mike Deher, the American Sign Language, and the Council of World Cultures, we were able to invite over 400 students from the elementary and high schools in Dearborn to attend a play titled "Folk Tales From the Arab World." This play was geared about promoting diversity and appreciation and understanding of other cultures. It was also an opportunity for us to promote our American Sign Language program and the Arab Culture Studies programs, for which many students who were in attendance expressed interest, you know, in both programs. I would like to thank Dr. Jill Choakhall from the Dearborn Schools who assisted me in recruiting the students from the elementary schools, over 250 students. I'm hoping that those students, when they're college-ready, they remember us and come to our college. They are still at the elementary level. 1001 Invention Exhibit. In collaboration with the Arab Culture Studies Program, we were able to invite over 140 students from both the Dearborn Schools and the college to attend the 1001 Invention Exhibit at the Michigan Science Center. The exhibit is aimed at introducing the visitors to the golden age of science and Muslim civilizations and the achievements of the Arab scholars from all faith during that period. The exhibit also aims at promoting STEM careers while still promoting intercultural appreciation and fostering mutual understanding and social cohesion. We received a great feedback from the students in the Dearborn Schools through their teacher and advisor, Mrs. Jennifer Frisell. Because of the feedback was so in-depth and was so constructive, the 1001 Inventions staff asked us for permission, you know, to post their feedback on their social media, and we were able to get the permission and went on their social media. A resolution supported by Representative Abdullah Hamud was passed in October of 2017 to declare October 2017 as 1001 Inventions Month in the state of Michigan. I would like to thank Dr. Yusuf Musallam from the Dearborn Schools for assisting me in recruiting the students from the high schools. I would also like to thank Dr. Hashim Al-Tawil, who is a college professor here, for his presentation at the college prior to going to the exhibition. I also like to thank Dr. Glass, Dr. Nealan, Mrs. Holly Diamond, our college interim president, Mr. Sackowski, Dr. Daher, and Mrs. Gilliland for helping securing the money needed to fund this trip. You need to do a good event, we need the money, and we were able to secure the money. To strengthen our active involvement in the community, Dr. Glass was able to secure funds for me and three students to attend Move 2017. It's a conference that was held in November of last year, sponsored by Access. As a result of our participation, our college was listed as a partner college on the event website. It was a great opportunity for me to network and meet with many individuals who are very active in the Arab American community. I also was able to organize and plan to visit our college by two groups of deans and directors from the vocational schools in the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia. The visitors were interested in learning about our new organizational structure and tour our technical facilities. And Dr. Nealan was very kind and agreeing, you know, to do both presentations on our new organizational structure at that time. Thank you, Dr. Nealan. I will be following up on conversation and dialogues I started already, and I'm planning many more meetings and new dialogues this semester. I'm hoping that in my capacity as a liaison, I will be able to contribute to the college efforts, especially later, you know, this year, in sharing information with people about, you know, our millage renewal, and hopefully assisting the efforts to recruit more Arab American students, you know, to our college. If you have any suggestions for me that would support our outreach efforts as a college liaison, I'll be very grateful. I'd be willing to schedule a meeting, you know, with any one of you to listen to your ideas and suggestions. If any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them if I can. If not, I'll ask Dr. Glass.
Excuse me. Trustee Hamud.
Yes. First of all, thank you for taking on this role. And as Trustee Petlicov also brought up, we hope to see this happen not only for the Arab American community, but we really are a community college, and that represents many communities. So, and I commend you, Dr. Glass, as well. Diversity is something that's very important to this college. And I know Mr. Bazey, I see him everywhere, and perfect person for this position. So very glad to have you there. One is, was there, what were the concerns, the main concerns? Was there a reoccurring concern that you heard from the community? And two, the Arab American community is a large community. There are, for example, not, you have people from all over the Middle East. What efforts are we doing to make sure we reach all those groups? For example, you have the Lebanese community, Yemeni community, Syrian community, huge refugee community, which is involved, and all the Palestinian community. And not only in Dearborn, but we're hoping to bring in people, you know, from all over. So I hope that that effort, I know it's an ongoing effort.
Right.
And not only to help in student enrollment, but also in diversifying our faculty. If we do have positions open, what could we do to make sure that it's reaching those applicants? And we said this before, if we have a diversity problem, the conversation should begin from within. What could we do to make sure that we are attracting these applicants? What can we do to make sure that we are attracting, you know, students, in your position, Arab American students, from not just Dearborn, but, you know, from all over? And second, as a community liaison, I think, as also a college, that, a suggestion that I wanted to bring up is, I recently visited our International Student Enrollment Center, and I saw Vice President Best there, and I was excited to see him on my way out. But I was there with somebody who had the potential of being an international student, and I do know that a high majority of our international students come from the Middle East. So I would like to find out more about that as to our numbers. But that's also, you know, a community, we would hope more people from the Middle East want to choose our college. What could we do, for example, to make sure that, like the international student that was here, to make sure that resources are available to them? Because I'll tell you, when I was there, I was shocked that not one person in that office was of Middle Eastern descent, or let alone spoke Arabic. And I think that those are the concerns that we need to bring forward. You want to talk about diversity and a diverse office. That's why I'm very happy you have the position that you do. But we do have some problems, and there are rooms for improvement. Because if I wasn't there with that student, or if she didn't know English, and if we're trying to attract people from the Middle East, we can't just depend on our students to do that. We need to depend on ourselves, and we need to have people in those offices, especially if the majority of our students come from the Middle East. That's the least that they deserve, is somebody that could speak to them if we are recruiting them and bringing them here. So these are just some of my concerns. I trust that you will do great work, and there is a lot of work to be done.
And I have to share with you, I have, do very much have similar notes, as you mentioned. That's what I heard, jobs were a concern. The college to be community-friendly, you know, was another, you know, just concern, you know, by people. So it's pretty much, yeah, I'm collecting, you know, just ideas and concerns, and then we'll be meeting, you know, just, I'm meeting regularly with Dr. Glass, you know, just and other authorized people, you know, just to propose solutions.
Thank you.
And as you said, it is a small community, but I thought it was a small community until I got the list, you know, just of the organization and the key individual in the community. It's a huge list. There are so many organizations, so many people who are active in the community, and I didn't think even in one semester I could reach out, you know, to all of them.
We have a lot of work ahead of you.
So we will continue, you know, just our efforts.
Thank you.
Trustee Thorpe.
Going along the lines of what Trustee Hamud said and what Trustee Petlicov was saying earlier, you mentioned if there's no one there that can speak Arabic. We have a large Hispanic population in southwest Detroit, then it would also be useful to have somebody that can speak Spanish. Nothing against other languages, but just demographically, who's around us, that would make sense. There was also a few comments in the report about, I believe, was the world religion course, and making sure that the religions are being properly interpreted. I don't know how we instruct that class, but I would assume that we would be bringing in somebody that can really teach the Muslim faith, the Jewish faith, the Christian faith, whether it's that they do a panel discussion, or they come in and actually do a segment of the class. I'd like to make sure that we're doing something like that in a class that way.
And if I can comment on this, Dr. Cynthia Glass, I had a meeting with her, you know, a few days ago, and she made very similar suggestions in how we can overcome, you know, just this concern. Yeah, through seminars, you know, or something like that.
And that's nothing against the Buddhists or the...
Definitely.
Any of the others, I'm just thinking of the main ones.
Trustee Petlicov.
Just to touch upon that, when we get involved in these things, we still have to understand that we're a community college, we're a public college. Just like you said, we can't have a prayer room. We can have a room that's open because of the legalities of how...
Definitely.
So it also is included in instructors. We can't just have somebody coming in because they're an expert on their religion and walk into the classroom and still maintain our accreditation for those classes. We have some qualifiers in order to, so it would have to be structured in a way where it was like a seminar or something, but we would still have to have a qualified instructor in there. So we have to be cautious with what we communicate. My only challenge to you is that as you hear these concerns, it has to be explained back, the college requirements as well, as to how we service our community and the students, so that they understand that there are challenges that we are trying to meet, the balance in the middle for all of our students.
Right. These courses are, you know, and Dr. Nealan and I spoke about this, it's, they're not, world religions is not being taught from a theological perspective.
Right.
It's from a historical perspective. So I think the Imam was concerned about, you know, maybe that his desire would be to teach more from a religious perspective, but that's not the intent of that course.
Right. That's why I'm saying we need to indicate.
So it's about communication. It's about understanding, and then also providing opportunities for the religious community to come in and present as a seminar-based type of thing, which is different than the content from a historical perspective.
Then, right.
Right. I also did want to just mention that we do currently have a meditation room, and it's in the student center. It's very small, though. The Operations Council worked on that as a project in the last year. But the Muslim Student Association is really not happy with it, and the size and just the access. So that's what we're really looking at, is...
A bigger room.
A bigger room. But I just want to make sure you knew that we do have space dedicated to meditation and opportunities for all students.
Yeah. Because that's something that's provided so many places. I mean, I was shocked, and I'm glad you clarified that when you, you know, you have on Ann Arbor, you have on Dearborn, many, many institutions that you go to have those meditation rooms, you know, available. So I was shocked when I thought that there wasn't one. I'm glad there is.
There is one, but it's extremely small. It's very small, yeah.
One that would, that people can use, at least, you know? Or could accommodate our population.
Trustee Elaine.
I'd like to reiterate Trustee Hamud's comments. I think they're all important, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, so I'd just like to underscore them. I agree with all of those. And then I'd like to say, in regards to Trustee Thorpe's comment, I agree, there's a large population in southwest Detroit, DACA recipients, who we've all heard lots and lots of discussion about, and we could benefit from, in diversity and in terms of gaining students, from recruiting from that population. My concern is, I did not see a plan, and Dr. Mead, I'm going to relate this, just like you've taught us. I don't see in the strategic plan what's going to be our mix of language speakers, what's going to be our mix of admin and instructional. I don't know where we're going. I see that we need diversity, and we're supposed to be working on that, and I hope we are, because it makes for better decisions. But I'd like to see a better explanation. I don't get where we're going with that, and I would like to know where we're going with that. And we have a couple of hires on here. How do they relate to the overall plan? I heard a number thrown out a while ago that we were going to be hiring 10 people in HR. That was a while ago, but I don't know. What's the plan? So I...
The plan comes from Dr. Glass, so let her describe it.
Well...
I mean, really, you got the goals, right, for diversity?
So the diversity task force is an institutional, cross-representational task force that actually presented to the board last April, I believe it was. And we talked about the diversity plan. We talked about the diversity and inclusion training and development and cultural awareness programs, the hiring and what we are doing in terms of outreach and actually recruitment from a more diverse population, as well as training search committees on unconscious bias. We've begun that. So all of the things that we've talked about in our last presentation are happening.
But those things all flow from the strategic plan and from the goals that, from the goals that you have listed. I think there is an intersection.
Okay, so I feel good about that, but I'd like to say, I'd like to have, Mr. Sackowski, I'd like to have periodic data to tell me, how are we, we're trying to be diverse?
Sure.
Yeah. Are we actually getting somewhere?
Are there measurables that are in that strategic plan that shows targets associated with those very, there are things, I don't have them, you know, right, very handy, but there is the...
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm not expecting anybody to come up with them now, but at some point, we need to be checking ourselves. Now, in our P-12 weekly updates, we have a whole section, which we've insisted on for many years, things that the board has requested, and where we're at for those things. And I know, Mr. Sackowski, you're not going to vamp everything, but I'd like some kind of dashboard to tell us, what things did we ask for, and are we moving on those, or are we just expending hot air?
And it could be related to the goals of the strategic one.
It should be.
Yeah.
It should, definitely, because that is what we all agree on.
That's what we're evaluating on.
But are we actually moving there? Are we just spinning our wheels and everybody tells us that the emperor is wearing clothes? So I hope not, but I'd like to have some more...
You hope he's not wearing clothes?
No, I hope he is. I hope they're not just telling us that, he or she.
Thank you, Trustee Elaine. Trustee Barry.
Yes, I mean, we were all present at the last report Dr. Glass gave us, so I'm looking forward to the next report, and it should be coming up soon. I was part of the presidential search committee last time around and this time around, and I know Dr. Mead is going to speak on this, but I'm very thankful for everybody that spent the whole weekend with us. Administrators, faculty, community members, students, elected officials, thank you for your service there. But all eight candidates mentioned diversity. And last time around, same thing, diversity should be celebrated. And I think I've been around on this table for a little over a decade, and I know that needle hasn't moved much. So I'm looking, I'm very looking forward to, you know, the next report. Just want to follow up on what Trustee Thorpe mentioned about the world religion class. I'm a way state taking classes, and they allowed me to take two electors in Henry Ford. I'm like, great, save me a ton of money, and gas, and parking, the whole nine yards. And I did take world religion, Dr. Glass, and I am very, very, very comfortable the way it was taught. There was no guest speakers coming in. I mean, the instructor made it very clear that nobody was going to come in and address us, you know. You've got different religions, different sects, different views within a religion, stuff like that. But she did give us the opportunity to visit synagogues and the churches and the mosque, and it was a Buddhist temple and the whole nine yards. It was a great experience. I sat in the back... I sat in the back, it was quiet, and I watched these young people. I am very, very comfortable the way that class was taught. Let you, just, you know, some feedback for you, if somebody asks, Mr. Bazey, so, very, very comfortable the way it was taught, just to comment.
And one last thing, Trustee Elaine, in the booklet that you received in the mail, there is a section on diversity, so I would point you to that data, that dashboard.
I just have a question for Mr. Bazey.
Yes, sir.
How do you like your new career?
I like it, it's different. I mean, I love to work with X and Y. I'm a math professor, but it's nice, you know, to shift away, you know, from it sometimes, you know. Yeah, it's very, very interesting, and if you feel like you can contribute, you know, to the college and the community in a different way, rather than teaching students good mathematical skills, you know, I like that. It's, a lot of people ask me this question. Yeah. They ask me, are you getting, you know, just paid more money or something like that? I said, no, but it's different, and it has a lot of value, you know, just in it, so...
Yes, it does. I appreciate you doing the work.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to know how hard it is to leave the classroom, but I'm glad you get a little change of pace. And it's a very important change of pace for the college.
Definitely.
So thank you, Mr. Bazey.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next report, DTE Next Generation Advanced Technology Workforce Pipeline Development Grant. Board Report Number 4417, Vice President Nealan.
All right, well, thank you all. Mr. Setkovsky and Dr. Mead and trustees, we wanted to be able to give you a snapshot at where we're at in our partnership with our friends at DTE. As you might remember, there was a $600,000 foundation grant that helps us right now try to actually build programming, reverse-engineering it basically, from what the performance-based outcomes are for folks who would be in starting positions in DTE, and reverse-engineering that backwards into curriculum that could be able to prepare students for careers in that industry. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues to come on up. They'll introduce themselves with the parts that they're going to present today. We did have an opportunity to share some of this with the, our own foundation board just a couple months ago, but we thought it would be a good idea to be able to share that with you as well.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Maholsky. I am the project manager for the DTE Power and Trades Pathways Grant. I would like to introduce Deborah Majeski. She's the manager of the Center of Excellence at DTE Energy, and she's also been a key player in really developing this partnership between DTE Energy and Henry Ford College. And so tonight, we're just going to be giving you an overview of the project, laying out our grant deliverables and updating you on our current progress. As Dr. Nealan stated, the grant was for $600,000. It ends on May 31st of this year. We are exploring the...